Can everyone hear me? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. How about Celeste? Can we do the roll again?
Yes.
Can you hear Celeste?
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, we're going to start the roll again, please.
Alan, are you present? Berman, are you here? Brown?
Brown here.
Ford?
Here.
Fraz? Fraz? Gums?
Here.
Kenyon?
Kenyon here.
Ayess?
Ayess present.
Kope?
Kope is present.
Leonard?
Leonard here.
Lewis?
Lewis here.
Martin?
Martin present.
Molina?
Molina present.
Sanchez?
Here.
Shepperd?
Here.
Silva?
Silva's here.
Strathman?
Strathman here.
Sergeus?
Sergeus here.
Tepe?
Here.
Weber?
Weber here.
Okay, and Wonniki?
Wonniki here.
You have quorum.
Very good. Welcome, everybody. I would like Mr. Allen, could you please do the Pledge of Allegiance for us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Bates here.
Thank you.
Fraz here.
Thank you. Welcome both. As a matter of pro-call, we're asking if there's any public comment. Is there any public comment in the audience? And is there any online? Hearing no public comment, we'll move on to our presentation. This is an interesting time for all of us. We're about to make a decision that is going to impact the county for the next 10 years. It's quite a responsibility and one that I hope that we all take as serious as this opportunity presents itself. You're asked for a couple of things, and we're going to have further discussion as we have the rest of this meeting. But the three things we have to be aware of, or actually more than three, there's sensitivities to all three, is first, we're talking about apportionment. Now, you have seen these maps that are behind me, which show the county reapportionment that has happened over the last three decades, from 2000, what we're going to be doing now in 2020. What the reapportionment means is that you're going to be deciding how many board members there's going to be within the representative districts. Currently, it is at 24. 10 years ago, it was at 26. You're going to be asked if you would like to increase the size of the board, or if you would like to decrease the size of the board. And these are important decisions for you to make, because they have many variables within those decision-making processes. You're also going to be asked if you would like to have a two-member district board, and breaking down, let's, for example, the current 24-member board to 12, a district of 12, with two board members representing each one of those districts, potential districts.
Or more members per district.
Or perhaps more. Or perhaps more, that is absolutely correct. You're also going to be asked if you would like to be within those districts that have multi-member boards, if you would like to be elected at large, or if you would be elected by cumulative vote, by majority rules.
Okay.
So that's another issue you'll be talking about. The second one is you may use the terms reapportionment or redistricting, meaning the same, they are actually different. The redistricting is the drawing of the maps, which we're going to be working on over the next several weeks. And there are rules and structure to the drawing of these maps, such as they must be continuous. They also have to make sure that they have approximately the same type of population, the size of population, with about a 10% variance. It also means that we have to be very sensitive to the Voting Rights Act of 1965, to ensure that minority populations are fully represented within those districts, but not packed inside of a district, so that there are less opportunities for minority representation. And this has certainly grown here, but I believe census data is going to show, the census data that we do have, that within the last 10 years, Kane County's minority population has definitely increased to well over 30%. So this is going to have to be something that we're going to have to take careful look at. The other issue you're going to be talking about may be a little bit sensitive to you because of upcoming elections. We have to decide your compensation. Together as a board, you're going to have to decide if you would like to keep your salaries the same, your compensation, if you would like to have a set compensation as you have now, or if you'd like to have a compensation plus per diem, or simply per diem as it was once in the past. This has got to be set before the November 2022 election takes place. If you choose not to have the compensation increase at this point, and decide to set it at the same, it has been mentioned, because you're sensitive to potential pushback because of your primary elections, it has to be done 180 days if you're going to be making any shift before the November 22 election. Once set, it'll be set for the next, for you, for the next two years, or potential four years. I'll give you an example, my compensation has not been raised for approximately 14 years. Your compensation has pretty much stayed the same for the last 10 years. So these are things that you need to address. And I would like, as we start going through that, please don't think individually about your own vote, I'd like you to think about future boards, and how you would feel would be most appropriate for them. I think this is something that we all need to consider, you're not just voting about yourself, which of course is very important, I'm not denying that, that's critical, but also think what future board members may want. The other thing we're going to be deciding are the terms of the board. In September of 2022, by September 1, the county board will be distributed into two separate groups. Each group will serve a differently staggered term for a 10-year period. This will be open to the public, as we either have you draw your number, if you'll be two or four, equally represented, or we'll determine how we're going to do that. But it will be public acknowledgement of how many years you'll be serving in office before you're up again for election, and this will be set for 10 years. So you may have two consecutive four-year terms, you may have a four, two, and then another four for your seat, or a variety thereof, but there's a series of two fours and one two. And that'll be determined on how, with the drawing of the hat, how that's going to work for you. So those are the things we're going to be talking about. We're going to be meeting next week as well to make some of these decisions. I have not yet, and am planning on so doing, putting together a committee that'll talk about compensation, which will be a recommendation to the board. The reapportionment task force, first request, is going to be taking a look at making recommendations to you on the size of the county board, but it's ultimately up to your decision, and only your decision, to make that decision and vote. So those are, those are the things that I have to share with you, I'd like to share with you. If you haven't had a chance to take a look at the maps behind us, please do so after the meeting, they will also be posted, they will stay here at the county boardroom, which welcome to come visit. They're also upstairs on the third-floor conference room, and you can just sit there and study them. And as well as different versions will be presented to you as we go through the drafting process. But before we begin, you may also want to consider what the precincts look like. The precincts will be drawn last, that's the last job that we have to do, and some of the precincts have significantly grown. We have 17 precincts that have more, range from 1,500 to 2,000 people. Average precinct is supposed to be approximately 800 people. We have 20 precincts that go from 2,000 to 3,000 precincts, or people in them. We have three precincts, can imagine walking this one, anywhere from 3,000 to 4,000 people in one precinct. And we have one precinct, which is the, wins the prize, that has 7,500 people in it. So you can see that there has been some significant growth in certain areas of the county, which is going to be taken a look as we do our redistricting. So with that, I'd like to, now, we're going to be having, my other notes. State's Attorney, Assistant State's Attorney Michelle Nierman is going to be presenting to you information about the technical and legal aspects of what we're going to be facing. But I want to remind you, and once again, read to you who the board members are, who are going to be the voting members of the reapportionment task force. That will be Ron Ford, Michelle Gums, Cheryl Strathman, Drew Fraz, Mike Kenyon, and John Martin. Thank you for volunteering to do this, it's going to be an arduous and meaningful task, and I do look forward to working with all of you. And again, thank you for volunteering to do this, it's much appreciated. Is it done? Okay.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. Okay. All right, thank you for so nicely laying all of the tasks out that the board needs to consider. It is a very large process, and I think that was a great, nice succinct way to put and name all of the various tasks of the important work that needs to be done here. We're going to begin today just simply by giving you an overview of the statutory requirements both under state and federal law, that will serve as sort of as your framework and parameters for your reapportionment work. Okay, so, under the state parameters, we have the Illinois constitutional parameters, as well as the state statutory parameters. Under Article 7, Section 3 of the Illinois State Constitution, our requirements for our type of county government are set out for reapportionment and for re-elect, for electing the county board. In particular, the Constitution requires that the number of board members are to be fixed by ordinance within the limitations set by law. The General Assembly is responsible for providing the methods of election for county board members, and any change in the method of election must be approved by the countywide So, following this constitutional mandate, then, the General Assembly has set out the requirements for electing county board members in the Counties Code portion of the Illinois compiled statutes. Under Section 2-3,002, we have our requirement that the county board and counties with township form of government, i.e. Kane County, are to reapportion the county every 10 years after the federal decennial census, so that each county board member represents the same number of people. And the same number of people is going to be a concept that's repeated out through both statutory Illinois state law, as well as federal law. Now, the first step in the process will be to determine the size of the board, as Madam Chair mentioned earlier. The limitations on the numbers are that the board must be between five and 29 members. The second step, then, is to determine the method of election at large or by board districts. I'll note in this regard that the Illinois Constitution requires a referendum if the county board wants to change the method of election. The Illinois Attorney General has pined that obviously there's a conflict between state statute and the Illinois Constitution in this regard, and the Illinois Supreme Court has held that it's the electors who must approve a change in the method of election. At this point in time, it's too late for a referendum, so we really don't have any choice but to confirm the method of election at this point. Section 2-3,002.5, I just want to touch on this very briefly, this section was designed specifically to apply to DuPage County when it reached 800,000, to provide for a smaller board. In 2011, Kane County used this as a guide to reduce its board, to begin reducing its board, number of board members. So it went from 26 to 24 in 2011. We will note that, as current data indicates, from the, from the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, now indicates that Kane County's population is not expected to reach 800,000 Okay. So it's Section 2-3,003, sets out the four state requirements for each county board district for the report, for the factors to be considered. I'll note, let's see here, each district as defined above in A, B, C, D. First, you, each district shall be substantially equal in population to each other district. It shall be comprised of contiguous territory as nearly compact as practicable. It may be divided, you may, districts may only divide townships or municipalities when it's absolutely necessary to conform to the population requirement in paragraph A above. And each district shall be created in such a manner so that no precinct shall be divided between two or more districts insofar as practicable. I'll note that in the equal in population, the definition of population is defined within the statute to mean the number of inhabitants as determined by the last preceding federal decennial census. So that would be the 2020 U.S. Census in this case. All right, so to begin the map drawing process, Section 2-3,003 provides that the chairman may develop a plan to present to the county board by the third Wednesday in May, and provides, and then this section also provides for a process if this option is chosen. This step is optional and is not required under the statute. Under Section 2-3,004, the county board has a deadline of July for completing the reapportionment process under the statutory scheme. If the county does not complete its plan, by that time, the county clerk must convene the county apportionment commission. Now, the county apportionment commission would be comprised of the county clerk, the state's attorney, the attorney general or his designee, and the two chairs of the Democratic and the Republican Central Committees in the county. The section further provides the process for the commission to follow if this indeed does go to a commission process. If the board, I just wanted to note here, that if the board fails to determine the size of the county board before it goes to the county apportionment commission, the districts would be the largest number permitted under the statute, which is 29. The commission must submit a plan by October 1, if they have jurisdiction over it, or they may seek an extension of up to 60 days from the circuit court. Once the plan is completed, it must be filed with the county clerk's office. The next section, 2-3,006, gives the consequences for the failure to file the plan, that states that if no plan is filed with the clerk, the county board members are elected at large. All right, the next section, 2-3,007, governs the election of a chairman and her term. There are no changes at this time, so this really is not relevant to our reapportionment process at this time. Section 2-3,008 requires the county board to determine salaries for the county board members and the chairman, which, who are to be elected after the reapportionment process. And as the chair, as Madam Chair noted, this is to be done at the time of reapportionment. Section 2-3,009 requires that the board determine by September 1, 2022, the terms of the incoming board members by lot. As the chairman noted, this would be, basically, you would divide the county board up into two groups, choose by lot as to who would have terms, for example, of four years, four years, two years, or two years, four years, four years. So finally, in addition to your other tasks under the Counties Code, the Elections Code provides that you will also adjust precincts, precinct lines at the time of reapportionment, so that each precinct is between 500 and 800 voters. Okay, so next.
Excuse me, may I ask a question, or are we to wait? Are we supposed to wait?
No, you can ask a question, Mrs. Bates.
So, thank you, Madam Chairman, this is Bates. Will we be apportioning precincts within city limits, or just in unincorporated areas?
Oh, it'd be throughout the county. Throughout the county, the entire county.
Including municipalities?
That is correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I didn't realize we were, I didn't realize we were asking questions in the midst, if I can, and admittedly, this is my first time going through the cycle, but when you mentioned the DuPage model, it was, there was the notion that if there is an increase to 800,000, then there would be a forced reduction in representation. But what, but, but conversely, there was a statement that if you don't do anything, it could blow up to a maximum of 29 people. What, what, I don't understand the, what's the rationale or the reasoning or the, I don't get that.
This particular statute was written specifically for DuPage County. The language, if you'll note in there, is a little oddly phrase, and it is, we need to look at the legislative debates to determine whether it actually applied to anyone but DuPage. It says, beginning with members elected at the general election in 2002, counties having a population between 800,000, sorry, I'm seeing here, between 800,000...
3,000.
800,000.
800,000.
800,000 and 3 million, according to the 2,000 decennial census, shall have no more than 18 members on their county board. If the chairman of the county board is elected, shoot, I'm sorry, my glasses are not working, elected at large.
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, let me get my paper version.
I have new glasses, too, and they're, they're going off and on. Oh, perfect.
Okay, I got it. You got it?
You're a wizard, look at that.
So, so in that first line, beginning with the members elected at the general election in 2002, counties having a population between 800,000 and 3 million, according to the 2,000 decennial census, shall have no more than 18 members, so.
But why would you have less with more? And again, maybe that's just a naive question.
So there's an argument there that it would only relate to DuPage, period. That's just the statutory requirement for DuPage. We do need to look at the legislative debates to see if there was any sort of room for movement in terms of future counties coming on board, or you would anticipate a legislative change.
I believe Mr. Shepperd has a question.
Cliff, maybe I could cut through this.
Can you, the microphone, please?
The Illinois Constitution, in its wisdom, says there shall be no special legislation when a general law could be made applicable. So, for example, this provision applies to any county in the state that has between 800,000 and 3 million, all, one of them. Over the years, it started a lower number. It was, first, everything was 500,000 or more, and that was only Cook County. And we grew, and so they moved the goalpost. And then it became a million, then it became 3 million. Meanwhile, they didn't repeal a lot of the old statutes that said 500,000.
Who is "they"?
The legislature.
State legislature.
State legislature, all right? And so sometimes they forgot to move it, and so all of a sudden, hey, DuPage got to what was supposed to be Cook only. So this statute was, in fact, written for DuPage County, and part of the reason why they went from 24 to 18 is they also split off their Forest Reserve Commission. So there are still 24 countywide people, 18 of them are county board only, and six are Forest Reserve only. So while theoretically, and I think at one point, Roger had indicated that the projections for Kane County is that, I think in 2050, we would be at 795,000. So we still wouldn't be at 800, but I think the past history indicates that if anybody starts to get close to tripping over into a category which wasn't designed for them, they'll just move the goalpost. So you'll find now...
And again, the basis of my question, if you will, was, it seems like less representation the more, the more people you have, and that just seems counterintuitive to me for some reason, and I, I don't get it, and maybe there's some big political philosophy.
If you read the debates, it's going to say this is for DuPage County.
Okay.
There's really nothing more to that. At one time, this board had 42 members, because you had the elected single-member districts, as well as every township supervisor was also a member of the county board, which was called the County Board of Supervisors. But the 29 is what the maximum now is for counties of our size, and that's a default, as Michelle was explaining. If we do nothing at all, then we could end up, in theory, with 29 members elected at large, although good luck with the court system if you ended up in that situation.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you very much. And the way we, State's Attorney Nierman and I have talked, indeed, it was from, it was created for DuPage County. 10 years ago, it was enacted here in the county by reducing the size of the board from 26 to 24, which many of you were here at that point, and is currently here. So the law was taken advantage of here for the county, to reduce the size of the board as we move forward. What I can say is that it may have been crafted for DuPage, but it is the law of the land right now, and to obey the letter of the law, either we would have to change the law, or start considering if we're going to be moving forward. I believe that demographics do indicate that this, if it, literal can, if all things remain the same, could be kicked down the road for an additional 10 years, but that, at that point, the board would have to, if the law is still there, and it's up to 800,000, the future boards would have to be very proactive in reducing the size, to get it down to 18. So it would, every, every two, every 10 years, up for the next 30-year cycle, would have to be done. So either you can start the process now, or literally wait.
May I ask a question, please? Bates?
In a minute, Mrs. Wonniki would like to speak.
Thank you, Chair, Chairwoman. Ken just said something that kind of jogged something that I've heard other board members talk... talk about, and that's the possibility of separating the Kane County Forest Reserve from the county board. They have two different, two separate boards. Would this be the prime time to do something like that?
I think that has to be done by referendum.
So it could be done?
Or by state statute, I would mention.
Or amend the statute.
Right.
Why, theoretically.
So at any time, or during election time, is that?
I think it would have to be done prior to an election, I think it would have to be done during the census, because that sets your, your number of board members. You can't in five years decide, we wanna cut certain members. And although it looks like they cut the size, what really, in theory, happened is, six people wanted to be on the forest preserve, and 18 wanted to be on the county board, and so that's sort of how it worked out, although they didn't necessarily all win.
Okay.
Is that something you'd like to consider?
It is something that other members, board members, I think longer-serving board members have talked about. So, you know, I'd have to get other board members probably to think seriously about that. We are growing at a fast pace, so, and now we're trying to, you know, determine where we're gonna put our districts and district numbers and all, and maybe now would be a prime time to do it.
It could, Michelle, could you possibly get some information and bring it back to our next board meeting to start that discussion?
We would certainly be happy to. It's probably controlled by state statute, so we'll look at the process to see what would need to be done.
Okay.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Okay, absolutely. Is there any other comments, or we can go forward?
Thanks.
Oh, Mrs. Bates, Mrs. Bates.
Yeah, in the wording of the, of the slide, the previous slide, it seemed like it says the population as of 2000. So we weren't there in 2000, but are we going forward to 2020, and, I mean, 2020?
That was a baseline.
That, that is correct, and as Ken mentioned, and Ken, we always appreciate your historical knowledge, it's such a great wealth. As we mentioned, as Ken mentioned, you know, I think it's anticipated that the state legislature would move that goalposts, as Ken, Ken referred to it, once we start bumping up into, you know, crossover with other, other statutes.
So we're not really close, very close at all to that bump? I mean, 2050 or farther?
Yeah, it would be, the, the current estimates are after 2050, or slightly after 2050.
So it doesn't seem like we need to consider that very seriously right now. We may be kicking it down the road, but we'd be kicking it down the road 30, or 40, or 50 years.
Not necessar, I think, if, I'm gonna be a little bit more conservative with that, I'm not disagreeing with you, Mrs. Bates, but I do believe that according to CMAP data, it's at 795,000. So it's a small margin of error doing projection analysis for that long-term. Anybody who's served on a school board is very familiar with that analysis. It, it's, it's educated guess, but we have seen at Transportation Division meeting yesterday with their projection for 20, was it 2040, that there is gonna be major growth going on, the I-95 corridor, the 47 corridor, and the 80 corridor. So it's gonna be east, far north, and along 47. And we don't know what that looks like. And once again, I'll bring your attention to Rutland 2, which has a precinct within the last 10 years of 7,500 people.
Registered voters.
Registered voters.
Even more.
I'm sorry, registered voters. 7,500 registered voters. So probably, it's actually, I don't know, maybe 11,000, 12,000 people in one precinct.
Okay, thank you.
There's significant bumps of growth.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, please begin.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we've discussed the state statutory requirements, we'll now move on to the federal requirements, equal protection and non-discrimination. So first, under the equal protection clause of the US Constitution, districts must be in, equal in population, and this is known as the one-person, one-vote rule. It's very similar to our Illinois state statute requirement that we have substantially equal number in population between the districts. To achieve equal population, ideal district size is determined by dividing the total population by the number of seats involved. And the US Supreme Court has held that the population deviations greater than 10% are presumptively discriminatory, and when challenged, must be justified. So we won't wanna use that as a rule of thumb when we are, you know, talking about various populations, and sort of the impacts estimated data might have on, on population. Okay, so similarly, population deviations of less than 10% between the smallest and the largest district are presumptively valid, under the equal protection analysis. Deviations in excess of 10% can be held valid if there is a compelling state reason, such as ensuring compactness, contiguity, maintaining integrity of political subdivisions, like municipalities and townships, and that sort of thing. The second type of federal legal requirement that we need to be mindful of when, when we're doing redistricting is the Federal Voting Rights Act, in particular, Section 2 of that act. The principles of Section 2 include the following. Section 2 prohibits any voting practice or procedure that results in the denial or abridgement of any citizen's right to vote on account of race, color, or status as a member of a language minority group. Voting practice or procedure has a discriminatory effect and is prohibited by Section 2 if, based upon the totality of the circumstances, minorities have less opportunity than other members of the electorate to participate in the political process and to elect representatives of their choice. Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act also requires that a racial minority have the opportunity to be elect, opportunity to elect a candidate of their choice, not that a particular percentage of minority voters be present in a district. Section 2 also protects, prohibits, I'm sorry, the enactment of redistricting plans and other voting practices that were adopted with a discriminatory purpose. This is sort of the intentional discrimination, which is prohibited under the act. So in application, then, under Section 2, vote dilution is prohibited. And vote dilution refers to the use of redistricting plans and other voting practices that minimize or cancel out the voting strength of racial and other minorities. Court precedents establishes that districts cannot be drawn where minority voting rights may be adversely impacted by diluting the voting strength of minority populations. Voter dilution has been defined as fragmenting large concentrations of minority populations into separate districts, or concentrating minorities into districts in which they would amount to excessive majorities. The essence of a Section 2 claim, then, is that certain electoral law, practice, or structure interacts with social and historical conditions to cause an inequality in opportunities enjoyed by minority and white voters to elect the preferred representatives. As noted by our district court, vote dilution is most often attempted either by scattering the minority voters among several districts in which a block voting majority can outvote them regularly, or by centralizing them into one or two districts and leaving the other districts relatively free from their influence. An example, just to put this in sort of a perspective, is a case from South Dakota, where the court in that case rejected a South Dakota redistricting plan because of packing. And packing in that sense was, they had one district with 90% American Indians next door to a district with 30% American Indian population, and that was held to be invalid. All right, so the court precedents has established some, a few factors for proving a violation under Section 2, which are known as the Gingles Factors, which you don't need to remember, just because that's the, the name of the US Supreme Court case, but you might hear that as we're, as we're talking about different concepts moving forward. So the factors the court considers include whether the racial or language minority group is sufficiently numerous and compact to form a majority in a single-member district, whether the racial or language minority group must be, I'm sorry, and the racial or language minority group must be able to show that it is politically cohesive, so that is, they vote for the same type of candidate. In addition, the racial or ma, language minority group must be able to demonstrate that the white majority votes sufficiently as a block, usually to defeat the minority's preferred candidate. After this case was, was decided, a later case, Bartland versus Strickland, added the requirement that a minority group be a numerical, be a numerical majority, that's a 50% plus one of the voting age population, in order for Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act to apply. So if the plaintiff establishes this, and if you, if a plaintiff wants to contest the map, they would establish those factors. The next question, then, for the court would be whether, under the totality of the circumstances, the minority group had a less opportunity than the other members of the electorate to participate in electoral process and to elect representatives of their choice. So you look at the impact of it. Now, Ray?
May I ask a quick question, going back to the 50 plus one? So for clarity, if we have a district that has 75% minority, the same language, et cetera, and adjacent to that is another district that has 25% minority with the same language as the first district, that district then can be broken up of the 75, pending other factors, so that those two districts then would have 50% plus one vote?
That is possible. You may, you just need to look at the totality of the circumstances, and, you know, how you would have to do that, what the lines are looking like, et cetera, whether they're all within the same municipality. You have to look at everything in conjunction with one another.
Yeah, very good, thank you.
Okay, now, the role of race in drawing district maps. It's not always impermissible to consider race when you're drawing a district map. Race is permissible, permissible consideration in redistricting if and when it's necessary to satisfy a compelling interest, such as compliance with the Voting Rights Act. Merely being race-conscious is not itself illegal. A redistricting plan will not be held invalid simply because redistricting is performed with consciousness of race, or because a jurisdiction intentionally creates a majority-minority district. So you can voluntarily create a majority-minority district. A plaintiff challenging a plan must show that the legitimate, subordinated, traditional race-neutral principles, that the legislature's subordinated traditional race-neutral principles to racial consideration. Race must be the predominant factor motivating the redistricting decision, not just a motivation. And the race-neutral principles include the compactness, the contiguity of the, the district, et cetera. So, taking together the state and federal legal requirements, what are the so-called rules for drawing map lines? And these are very generalized rules that always will have to be vetted, but we just wanted to give you a kind of a rule of thumb. Under the state statutes and the US equal protection clause, districts must be substantially equal in population to each other district. They must be comprised of contiguous territory as nearly compact as practicable. Townships or municipalities may be divided only when necessary to achieve substantially equal population. No precinct shall be divided between two or more districts insofar as it is practicable. Less than 10% population deviation from the smallest to the largest district is presumptively valid, and greater than 10% population deviation is presumptively discriminatory. Under the Federal Voting Rights Act, you must not discriminate based on race, color, or status as a member of a language minority group. Language minorities are defined under the statute to include American Indian, Asian-American, Alaskan natives, or Spanish-speaking. Must not intentionally discriminate when drawing lines in any case. Must not dilute voting strength of minority groups intentionally or unintentionally. You must not fracture minority groups into small pieces across several districts so that the population has very little impact on the, on the election. You must not pack minority groups into a few super-majority districts, taking away voting impact of the minority group from the other districts. The majority-minority districts must be drawn where minority groups constitute 50% plus one of the voting age population. So, now that we have the ground rules sort of laid out, what tasks need to be completed by the county board as contemplated by the current statutes? As we've discussed, county board must first determine the size of the county board. The county board will determine, then, the ideal district size, which is the total population for the county as determined by the 2020 census, divided by the total number of county board districts. Typically, the census data is available in March or April, but it has been delayed due to COVID, and it's not available right now until August or September. The county board chairman has the option of presenting a reapportionment plan. Again, the US census data, however, is not available. The county board must also develop and compliance with the state and federal legal requirements, reapportionment plan, creating districts for the election of county board members, which districts must substantially comply, be equal in population, and otherwise comply with the state statutes and the Federal Voting Rights Act. The county board also must file a completed reapportionment plan with the county clerk on or before July 1st, or by the day after the county board's regularly scheduled July meeting in 2021, whichever is later. Again, we have the delay in the US census data, which will render this impossible. In addition to drawing maps, the county board determines the compensation of the members of the board and of the chairman at the time of reapportionment. No later than September 1st of 2022, county board divides the county board by lot into equal groups to determine the terms, and the county board adjusts the election precincts simultaneously with reapportionment, or immediately after. All right, so you may have noticed the common theme in the last couple of slides, which depicts sort of our largest challenge that faces the county board right now, and that is the delay in the US census data. This, as we noted, the statutory deadline for the county board to complete the reapportionment under the current statutory scheme is July of this year. The county's code requires the county use federal decennial census data to determine population and the ideal district size. No other data currently meets the statutory requirements. The US Census Bureau has estimated the summary data used for the county reapportionment will not be available until the end of September, although raw data might be available sometime in August. Some possible solutions to address the delay in the US census data would be legislative action first. There is currently SB 1666, which is, has been sponsored by Senator Holmes. It would extend the county's statutory deadlines by six months following the availability of data. This would necessitate the moving of the primary, and that does not appear to have great reception down in Springfield. There are additional shell bills, which are contemplated by a number of counties and county clerks' associations. Right after, we'll have Brian Pollak here to comment on the current draft bills and some of the efforts by the clerks' associations. Some of the shell bills might include proposals to use American community survey data, which use is. which use is controversial right now. So that'll be, that'll be interesting as well. A second option would be a court action. The county could file action with the county, with the court, asking for a reasonable period of time for the county board to complete reapportionment after the U.S. Census data becomes available, so maybe, for example, October, to complete. The California Supreme Court has sort of laid out a game plan for this type of approach, and indeed, they did move their, extend their deadlines for California's redistricting. Their legislature, however, also moved the date of its primary. Okay. So, given the current inability to use anything other than the U.S. Census data, how does the county board proceed with reapport, reapportionment? A number of the counties we've talked to, primarily DePage and Lake, are hitting the pause button, so to speak, right now. I think they're very hopeful that the legislature will act. However, even if, you know, we are hitting a pause button, there are still a number of tasks that could be performed by the county board at this time. So we've set out sort of a sample of preliminary planning process that the county board could engage in prior to the release of any 2020 census data. Some of the items the chairman has already discussed. The reapportionment task force has already been appointed by Madam Chair. Madam Chair talked about appointing an ad hoc salary task force to, to study and to make recommendations concerning compensation of county board members and the chair. The state's attorney has also appointed a special assistant, which I, who I will introduce you to at the end of my presentation here. He brings to the table a lot of expertise in dealing with maps. His name is Phil Lukhans, and I will introduce him in just a few moments. The county chair, county or chair could contract with a demographer, another consultant, to provide demography and plan coordination services. This might be extremely helpful just to keep the process moving, just because the, there's no real point person on county staff to sort of lead this effort. The reapportionment task force is going to meet tomorrow to discuss the board size and options for reapportionment process, to make recommendations to the county board. They'll develop the schedule. They'll also, they could also discuss the holding of public sessions with resident groups, minority organizations, interest groups, general public for input on reapportionment. And that's all, those are all things that could take place now. Those might be very useful sources of information, the minority organizations, et cetera. And then we're sort of identifying where areas of growth have been, where impacts are felt, just so that you can get a good feel of the areas you're going to need to address. The reapportionment task force could then proceed to meet with residents groups, as well as the county board if it chose to do so. A reapportionment task force would then, could then proceed to develop a preliminary draft reapportion plan in accordance with statutory requirements using available alternative population data. So that would be the ESRI and the American Community Survey data. We would recommend that this only be a preliminary plan and that it not be, serve as your final plan, however. And then obviously, the salary task force could meet to discuss compensation. Then we kind of laid out here a process for developing reapportionment plan once the U.S. Census data or approved substitute data is available. You know, we've kind of hit on a number of these points, and I don't want to belabor them, but basically, we'd download the data, you would analyze the current county board districts or the preliminary draft plan that the task force comes up with, and analyze, you know, sort of where that, that population change, growth has happened over the last 10 years. You would then prepare the draft reapportionment plan, review the districts and precincts with the county clerk, receive public comment, provide for public review, and then the county board would, would adopt. Before we go to questions, I do want to take a time to introduce Phil Lukhans. He does bring a lot of expertise to this field, both in terms of his local government experience, and specifically, his vast experience in redistricting and related litigation since the 1990s. He has also an in-house tech person that he uses to draw maps and then can work with our GIS department very closely to really enable the county to draw maps and really look at its various options. So Phil, if you're on the line, he's by Zoom, he's out of state.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Oh, great. Just wanted to say hi. I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, you're fine. I apologize. I didn't know we were having this meeting, so I am not wearing a suit. But nice to meet you all. I look forward to working with all of you as we go forward. And if you have any questions, I'm here at any time. And I appreciate the opportunity to assist you in this process, because it really is your process.
Thank you, Phil. Appreciate it. And Phil, when he, Phil says he didn't have a, didn't know. We talked to him yesterday afternoon and brought him on board. And so, in all fairness, thank you so much for rearranging your, your schedule, Phil. We appreciate it.
Of course.
Michelle, you're not suggesting that wearing a suit is required?
Never would I do that, Mr. Serge. So with that, if anyone has any questions, Phil does have great expertise, so he can also really delve into the practicalities of things.
Yes, Mr. Martin.
This is, I guess, as much, well, I'm going to ask it. Say it's a question.
Microphone?
Hello? Okay. The, there are a myriad of hypotheticals here in the context of what needs to be done. Do we, as, as you look at, if we, and there's some obvious anomalies that have to be dealt with, you know, the northwest side of the county is growing like topsy, and, and we have, we have population changes and what have you. Relative to all of the Voting Rights provisions and that type of thing, if you look at the map today as a static and accurate depiction of the population division, which in some senses it's not, but if it was, do we have any problems that we need to fix to address those federal issues? Because if we don't, I don't want to spend a lot of time talking about the hypotheticals. If we do, that's like a separate topic. But do we have issues that need to be addressed to comply with those statutes?
So we have, we have not delved, really taken the deep dive into that yet, Mr. Martin. Roger and his team and GIS team, Roger and Tom have put together and downloaded ESRI, which has ACS data in it. That's the American Community Survey data. It's, that ACS data is based upon a sampling of people, 1% sampling. It's over like a rolling five-year, you know, analysis. So we do have a very nice, interactive map that Roger, I believe, is going to show you in just a little bit, where you can pull up the various populations and including, you know, minorities of those. So Roger will be going over that. From memory, I think that there is, was a large growth in, say, the northwestern part of the county that was Mr. Kopey's district. There's also, I think, a concern, at least down in Aurora and Elgin, with respect to the Latinx communities and the growth of population there. So those, I think, offhand from memory are some of the first places that we're, we're going to need to address to comply with the state and federal statutes.
Well, and to that point, I'm going to sit here with a naive assumption that everybody has decent motives to comply with whatever our obligations are. And the, and we have a, quite a bit to accomplish. I don't want to preclude public involvement in anything, but if we can do this mechanically and know that we're doing it correctly and, and have the numbers addressed, I just, I, we need to chip away at, at resolving issues here, because the 800-pound gorilla is the timing of the census and the other stuff, and we can't be diddling around waiting, you know what, with, with, with other things. So I'd like to, I'd like to put those issues to bed. And maybe Mr. Lukhans and his, his technology person, I forgot what you used to describe that individual. I mean, I'd like, I'd like to look at, I'd like to look at a map and have somebody say, yeah, this complies, and, and not spend a lot of time in conversation trying to get there.
If I may, Mr. Martin, and then Mr. Shepherd, we, no one would disagree with what you just said. However, the devil's in the details with this. There are nuances to this. It's not simply just black and white. And because we don't have the data, the American Survey data has anywhere from, I've heard from two, and then Michelle Nierman, perhaps 20% change. So we don't know quite what is correct with this yet. And we have to, we are obligated to bring in representatives of minority populations to discuss their needs, their concerns of this. So the process is not going to be efficient. It'll be slow-moving and steady. That's the way I, I think it's going to be. We, we all know sensitively, with great sensitivity right now, what the political climate is for representation, equity in representation. And that is going to be something that I believe we have to be aware of and welcoming to.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we don't get input. What I'd like to though is to have a plan that at least in a threshold we think might work, so that people are not commenting on hypotheticals, and they can say, well, yeah, they did a decent job here, or this is what we need to have tweaked. If it's just a, if it's just presentations in the abstract, I don't know that, I don't know where that gets us. So I'd like, I'd like to have a, I'd like to have a framework that becomes the initiation of the discussion, rather than have the discussion and then put together a framework, I guess is what I'm saying.
So what we would recommend is, the first step would be to determine the set, the, the number of county board members.
Correct.
If the county board members are the same, I think the process is a little bit easier. But there are a lot of considerations for reducing the size of board or increasing the sizes of board. So that's a complete policy determination by the county board. So, but you do need that number set. That number could be set next week at a special county board meeting, or it could be set early May to give us time then to take that number and try to work with the estimated figures to get an idea of what we are addressing. And if, if Phil could maybe chime in here on the reliability of the ACS data, we did discuss yesterday that it would be probably useful to proceed to use ACS data for planning purposes and get a good jump start on this process, so we're not, you know, scrambling at the end. But Phil, if you want to maybe chime in here, that would be.
Yeah. Let me, the ACS data is not something that I think any expert or myself would suggest you draw with. However, it is made for one thing. It's really good at one thing. And that's giving you demographics of a particular area. That's really what it was intended for. So your question as to kind of understanding the federal issues early, I think you can do a lot of that now, once you decide if you're going to stay at your same number of districts, or same number of members. Once you do that, we can then overlay, and you have it, it sounds like on ESRI, you can now overlay what those districts are and whether they would be effective, and pretty, get a pretty decent handle on whether you have Section 2 issues in particular areas, because that's the one thing the ACS data will give you, is the, is the demographics. We historically have used the CVAP from the ACS data. You know, that's been used for 20, or at least two cycles, maybe, probably three. So you will get some information out of that that's very helpful, and will kind of answer what I think was your question, which is, do we have a Voting Rights Act issue, or where do we? So we can kind of focus on those areas first, because it's always my suggestion that you, that's your first, that's where you want to go first and really make sure that you solidify those districts so that you don't have a Section 2 problem. That, that would be my recommendation as, and you start there. We always start in those districts and kind of go from there, because that's usually your number one starting space, starting place, other than obviously equal population. And we're not going to know equal population for a while. I hope that answers the question.
It, it does. I mean, I just, I want to focus on something we can have that's not hypothetical, so that when we move forward, we're not juggling extra.
I think that's the best, that's the best place to start your focus. And the data that you have is other, you know, other than knowing what the exact population is, you'll have a pretty good handle on what the percentages are in those areas.
Thank you.
The one thing, if I may, the one thing I did hear today by Joe, I don't know Joe's last name, from ISECO, presented at the legislative meeting, that there is little appetite for, and I was speaking to one of our congresspeople, there's little appetite on both the state and federal level to delay the primary. And I think Brian Pollak will speak to that. They are leaning on the state level to use the American Survey data and not the census data. I know some counties, McHenry is starting to go forward using, or is it Candle? One of the two, excuse me, are going ahead and using the American Survey data. Some counties are, are, are waiting, are pausing until that is decided. So I, it's, legislation is going through. It's, some of it is in committee right now. 1666 seems to be being postponed, because there's no appetite for that delay, is what we learned today, the Senator Holmes bill. But there is much conversation about changing the decennial data as a definition of population to be used, on how we define our population. But that discussion is, is continuing to happen right now. Yes, Ms. Woodnicky?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, Chairwoman. I would think that we could go to the township assessors' offices, and they get notified every time there's a, a transfer of property, but also new properties that come into their township. And that would be possibly a way to, to find the number in townships and then, and then work our map around that, I guess. They have a lot of data that comes to them that they need to, they work with the recorder's office, and I just know that the new construction goes through their offices. So that, that would be a way, at least a thought, anyway.
But remember, it has to be voting, as, as we redistrict, not just families, but voters. So there may be a family of five with one voter.
Yeah, that's true.
There, there may be some outside data, and I haven't, I just kind of was researching this today with some national experts on this topic, that may help you kind of estimate a little better as far as growth. I think they use a lot of the data that the commissioner was talking about, or the board member, that you may be able to, I probably am going to price out anyway for something else. So you, you may have some, some additional data that will help you. There's nothing, unless you get the actual census data, that's not without a risk. That's the only thing, I guess, we can tell you.
And anecdotally, I've also heard that there's going to be challenges to that census data.
There will definitely, there already is challenges to the census data throughout the country as it relates to especially what they call differential privacy and some of the masking that the census is doing, so that you can't tell who lives in a particular district. I don't know that that will be very successful, but that is ongoing.
We live in challenging times right now.
Yes, we do.
Roz has a comment?
Yes, Mr. Fosse.
Michelle, I just want to say, great job on gathering all that data. It's going to give us a great roadmap and starting point and reference point. to give us a great roadmap and starting point and reference point. And as such, I would like, as a member of the task force, I would like to ask for a hard copy of your PowerPoint. Recommend maybe we get them all to the task force tomorrow. And then secondly, I would like to echo what Ms. Woodnicky stated. I think it is time to open the discussion about the Forest Preserve Commission. And if it were a good time to, if we're going to be going through all this, it'd be a good time to discuss if we want to separate that from the county board. Thank you.
We'll certainly look at that. The, I believe Ms. Talich, Jane Talich did email the packet prior to the meeting. So I apologize. I want to also thank Dawn Truce for helping me do research on the federal portion. There was a lot of information to go through. So I'm, I'm very grateful to all of her efforts to do, do additional federal research. And then we will look at that forest preserve issue for you as well. We'll also bring hard copies of the presentation tomorrow to the task force.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Hold on just a second, please.
So in addition to that, we're reworking the website that was used in 2011 for this purpose of redistricting. So documentation from these meetings, we're going to try and put it out there for consumption. So anybody that wants to look at the maps, we'll have those out there. If there's presentations that the public would like to see, they'll be out there as well. There's also packet information put out with the agenda packets. So all, all that information should be out.
Mrs. Bates, and then we have two more presentations that I think you're going to find of interest. So, and it's 4:15. So I just want to make sure, I want to answer all questions. But, Mrs. Bates?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chairman. And I, I hope all, the entire board would see those slides because they were very interesting and complicated. The League of Women Voters had a forum recently about redistricting, and they talked about a community mapping tool with the idea of keeping a community of interest together. In other words, you don't divide up a school district so that half of the kids who go to a, a primary school are going in one, are put into one district or another. This community of interest idea. Do we have any way that we can do this so that it's not strictly mechanical? That might be what would involve the community meetings or town halls. So you're not chopping, sawing right through a, a group of, of community interest.
That is correct. The demographer that we're considering hiring, part of their work is to do that. They're going to be doing outreach, exactly to your point. So they'll at least, we're, we're planning, hopefully having at least four outreaches into the community to talk.
Great.
Different representatives.
Okay.
To talk about this map.
I, I don't know if you want Phil to, Phil Lutkehans to supplement that at all in terms of, you know, what he is aware of in terms of data that can supplement that.
Oh, all hands on deck.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's not a lot of data per se, but I do think you're, it sounds like you're planning on having community hearings, you're planning on having board meetings or committee meetings. And I think it's very important. That's one of the things we should be doing, or you should be doing, is reaching out to the community and saying, okay, twofold. One is, what are those communities of interest that are important to you? This town and this town, they're pretty much the same, you know, they're, they're tied at the hip because of school districts or whatever else it may be. And two is, you as board members probably know those districts as well as anybody. So I think your input on that is hugely important because that's where you live. That's where, you know, many of you work, whatever it may be, those are your neighbors. So you yourselves are a huge source of information for how this map should go forward.
Absolutely. Well said. So if there's no other questions, perhaps we can bring up Brian Pollak now to talk from the clerk's perspective.
Thank you, Michelle. Well done.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here to confuse you a little bit more. Hopefully not. Thank you to Clerk Cunningham and to Madam Chair for the opportunity to present to you today, the clerk's office. While this is a, a county board function, at least until July, the county clerk's office is more than willing to help in any way possible. And Mr. Cunningham has plenty of resources available in the office and vast knowledge and has pledged to, you know, help in any way possible. So a couple of things we'd mention would be that Michelle had mentioned was regarding the population issue and that kind of hard statute about what data you're using. We are, the Clerks Association is working on legislation to help give you more options. As the statute mentioned earlier, you know, you're, you're stuck right now with the last preceding federal decennial census as your data source. What we're working on is language that would open it up so that we'd be able to use, quote, "the most recent data available to counties from the US Census Bureau." We wanted to have something that would be general enough to allow the use of the ACS data and then as your baseline. And then as your expert mentioned and some other questions have brought up, any other data that you have at the local level that Roger has or anyone else to help massage that data. But you need to get past that bar first. The concerns that, in trying to come up with a solution, our county is different than most of the counties in the state. A majority of the counties downstate are small. They haven't had growth. They've, they're pretty static. So when coming up with a solution that's going to help Kane County or the Coller Counties, that also helps a small county downstate, we had some challenges. We, that's why you've had suggestions like, oh, let's move the primary, or let's deal with this a couple of years down the road. That's not an option in Kane County. That's not an option in the Collers. So we've kind of led the push on this to get a viable solution. So the status at this point, we, there are a couple avenues that are available to us. There's, there is legislation that has moved from one chamber to the other that deals with this particular statute that we want to change. It's not, I haven't talked with the sponsor yet. It's something we're working on. That may be a way to, to amend that bill and, and solve two problems. The other thing is we, Senate Bill 1666 has been mentioned. It, it's dead. It, it never got out of committee, although in Springfield, things can come back to life. But at this point, that's not moving anywhere. The primary's not going to be moved and didn't really do anything to deal with the election situation. So we have spoken to some legislators that have asked that we have some consensus before we come back. So we've, the, the proposed language that we're dealing with, we're working with the Association of County Board Members and UCCI to get county buy-in. So that this is a joint solution between the clerks and the counties. And then at that point, the legislature understands that we're not having all these interest groups saying, well, give me this, give me this. No, we're trying to speak with one voice. So that's why we're looking for that solution that does apply to all 102 counties, not just ours, but will help us as well. With regard to the timing, it's been mentioned, you know, you want to get this done by July. Not just because the statute has currently states that you need to get done by July, we also have the timing issue for elections. We have that pesky March 15th, 2022 primary. It affects not just every board member here, but every state legislator and other offices as well. And as long as that primary stays on that date, you, you work backwards. Petition filing is going to be in November. Petition circulation begins at the end of August. So if you wait much past that July deadline, things don't get handled. Because if you think about it, you're going to approve that map. And then those voters who live in different districts, those, that data all has to be updated. Our voter registration system has to be updated. The voter cards have to go out. The educating the voters that you're no longer in District Nine, you're in District 10, or whatever it is, that has to happen. The, the candidates that want to know, well, where do I live? What district do I live in? Where am I going to run? Those issues. So there needs to be ample lead time to get that done. Unfortunately, you can't just flip a switch and then expect everything to happen tomorrow. So there are other factors that come into, into play. So it doesn't help when, right now, you're looking at a law that says you're limited. But we are working on things on our behalf, on your behalf, on everyone's behalf. Hopefully we'll have more to report, but there are, there are good conversations and hopefully something will move. So questions about that, questions about anything that I can answer that's not legal?
Brian Ferntepe here. Would it be possible, how would it be possible for us to be in agreement with the clerk's office so that we are speaking as one voice and help you out with that?
Well, the Legislative Committee certainly can, you know, I have spoken to the co-chairs on this, spoken to Madam Chair. So they're in the loop on this. I, I read you the language. So I mean, it's, it's pretty basic. There, I don't have a bill to say that we have a bill number at this point to start filing witness lips. There, that's, there are two options. So when we get to that point, certainly you can help in that, in that sense. Talk to your legislators. I think a few weeks ago, when we first started approaching legislators, they weren't thinking about this. Their goal is to draw their map, for their own map and the congressional map. And that's going to get done. And the cat's out of the bag, they're going to use the ACS data. Actually, what's interesting is when I was researching some things on the, the federal bill that just passed, the American Rescue Plan, that, that money, that data, that, that law is based on the most available, most recent available census data, pretty much the same language that we're using. So it was good enough for Congress. It's going to be good enough for the state. Hopefully it should be good enough for us. The difference is, when the state legislature draws their maps, they don't have a law that says you must use this data. They get to draw their map and then pass a law saying, this is what we used. Unfortunately, the county code says you have to do this. So that's where we're at. And hopefully we'll, we'll get to that point and we'll get your support. You'll talk to your legislators. And, and, and I think now they're aware of it. The question is, do they want to draw more attention to this, which will shine light on what they're doing and the maps they're drawing or not? And that's a political thing that we have to hope that they're going to err on the side of helping us.
Absolutely. Is there language that you could put together for us and perhaps deal with Michelle Gomes and Cheryl Strathman? And then we can start using the same type of conversation if we call and lobby some of our state legislators?
Sure. Want to get in the door? And then once we have that door open, we'll go that way.
Sounds like a plan. Sounds like a plan. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Questions? Brian, maybe, maybe you could answer this, or maybe Michelle. Just for clarity, when it comes to the election, the way I understand it, I've been kind of writing down some dates here. The petitions you could pick up on in August of 2021 for the next election, right? And then you filed petitions in November of 2021 for the primary of 2022.
Yes.
But whether it be an existing board member or somebody that's considering running for that position, you're not going to know at that point whether you're running for a two-year term or a four-year term. You won't know that until September of 2022?
That's correct.
As late as September.
That's correct.
Kind of like my cohort over here, some of these things just don't really seem to make a lot of sense.
It's the, the sorting hat metaphor, that everything names would put in a hat and then you just pick and choose. You won't know. You won't know. It says September 1st, but it'll be past the primary. Because.
Know that you're running for a full term when you, when you file. The question is just, what is that full term?
What is that?
Is it 244 or 442?
Right. No, and I understand that's the way it is. It just, you know, to me, that doesn't make an awful lot of sense because a lot of people may be considering the position because they know it's a two-year term, or because they know it's a four-year term, or not want to do it because it's a four-year term, but would do it because, if it's a two-year term. But we don't have that option here.
This is Deborah Allen with a question?
Yes, Ms. Allen.
Thank you. I lived through two of these. And the first one was done by Mike McCoy, and everyone was seated. And then he flipped a coin, and that was when you knew if you had a two-year or a four-year seat. But when Chairman McConaughey did this, she did the flipping of the coin before the filing. So if you were running, you knew if it was a two-year or a four-year term. So I'm wondering, did Ms. McConaughey break a rule when she did that? Or is it possible for us to approve our map and also say which, which districts will be two years, 244 or 442?
Michelle Nierman is here to answer that.
The statutory deadline just says you have to do it by September 1st of 2022. You can do it earlier.
That helps.
So, so she didn't, she didn't break any rules. Thank you, Michelle.
No, she did not break any rules.
So I, I assume by consensus of the board, I can always, I already see the heads nodding, that you would prefer it to be earlier rather than later.
Well, to, to me, it just makes sense. If you're going to run for a position, what position are you running for? A two-year or a four-year? It just makes sense.
We will certainly, easily after the reapportionment is completed and approved, I, I think we can start talking to that and put that process together. I, I just thought that you, everyone would like to serve because they want to serve and do the best job they can for an extended period of time.
Wouldn't argue that.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Pollak? None, none online? So Mr. Faust, can you come up and tell us a little bit about the maps?
Good evening. My name is Roger Faustock from the County IT Department. And what we have are just a couple of things that we're going to be providing information on to the board members and also the, the task force or commission that's going to be working on this. I'd like to begin by just reiterating that the census data that you have from the time when they did this back in 2011 timeframe, it's in the map to the right of the board up here. That's when they did the 2000 version. And then the center map is the 2010 version. And then the map to the left of Madam Chairman is the 2020 estimated data from ACS. So.
Can we see those maps online?
Yeah. Blair, if you could pull up the 2020 map. He's going to be pulling that up. Just give us a second.
Our board members can see it who are.
Yeah. So if you're, if you're online, you're seeing the, the map. This is a 2020 map that we had our GIS team do using ESRI mapping services and ACS, which is the American Community Surveys data, the most recent data set that they have. I have the full citation of this that we can provide if you need it for where the map data came from, but it is ACS most recent data. These maps represent the 24 board districts. Again, you had gone from 26 to 24 in 2011 when they changed that. And Blair, if you go to the next page, or I could probably control it from here, right? Let's see. Yeah. So this is actually the data from ACS, which describes the board district. So you have the board district number, your board name, and then the population. Then as you go across the top, you'll see the race ethnicity demographics. These are estimates from ACS. So they're based on the 2010 census data. And then they do the five-year annual surveys. I believe State's Attorney Nierman said that every year, they survey a certain sample size of the population and they come up with these for the purpose of estimating population for race and ethnicity. So they do have a margin of error. They're not census data from 2020 census. But this data is rolled into our map and is, is backing the map. So if you look at the map data, you'll see that those numbers are, are estimated populations, estimated ethnicity. Obviously you have Hispanic population in there. And then, you know, they have the black population. There's some other categories. But I think a lot of the attention that, that we've focused on is, you know, what are the different ethnic groups in the districts and what is the race ethnicity? Just so we can demonstrate through those estimates and give you some ideas as the task force or commission gets started. I think the demographer, the attorney, the other folks that are going to be engaging in this can help us understand those populations better. We probably won't get the actual census track data until September, and it gives, gives us limited amount of time to get the track data into. track data into mapping services. Anybody that gets that data will have to do that as well, which it can take a few weeks to get the track data into the mapping. So we may not actually have 2020 census data till October, maybe November, so that kind of timeframe. But this gives you representative data from those estimates, and you can see kind of what that looks like. We also put together a map of the state representative districts, so you can get an idea of that as well. These are the representative districts for Illinois. I'll flip through to the next slide. This is the population demographics for those. Again, they're ACS data. It's a data layer based on those estimates. It shows you the population and the demographics by those districts. We also did the congressional districts. So you have the congressional districts for the county. These are the federal districts. And then again, ACS data where we show you the population and demographics of those. All of these maps and information, we're going to be putting those obviously out to the board members directly, but they'll be posted on that webpage on the county's website, and they'll be associated to the agenda packet. So if you want to consume those, you should get a link to it in your email shortly, and then you'll also be able to direct people out to the website if they want to go take a look at that information as well. We do have some disclaimers at the bottom about it being ESRI-enriched data. We're going to try and put some additional citation information with it. But that's important to know that it is not the official data from 2020. So the other part that is included in this packet, and we won't go through all of these, but these are the precincts. So if you're not familiar with them, there's a two-letter prefix, and then the precinct numbers. These are Aurora, Batavia. But these go through all of the precincts, and this is also broken down using ACS data and ESRI to show you population, race, ethnicity characteristics by precinct. It also shows you the number of registered voters in the precinct, which there's going to be a discussion about that, how you deal with the precinct size. There was some information in the statutes about the size requirements for precincts. And I know the county clerk has a lot of information and a lot of consultation with the board about the precinct sizes. But you'll see some of these precincts are relatively large. I think we have, the largest one is in Elgin, and I-
Rutland, too.
Rutland, is that the big one? All right. We got to go pages. These are a lot of pages, right? If you see these, the W precincts, those are Ward precincts that carried over from the Aurora Election Commission when they came over to us. I think I might have went past it. Oh, there it is. It's Rutland 2 at the bottom down there. Yeah. So you'll see that we have one precinct that has a lot of registered voters in it. And I think the loss somewhere between 500 and 800 voters in a precinct. So that data, along with the other set of data we have from 2010 and 2000, will be made available. It'll give you kind of a comparison of where we were at in 2010, 2011, when we got the census data, and then now with the estimated ACS data where we're at now. Again, there's a margin of error in that, but that's what we want some of these experts to help us with, explaining the populations as we see them. And if we can use the ACS data with those expert opinions from legal and also from demographers and people that are professionals in analyzing populations and their demographics, that will help us make better educated maps. So I'm not going to go through the other 2000 and 2010 maps. They're very similar, similar data. But Blair, if you would, there's a population set of slides. It says Kane. Yeah, that's it. Thank you. For the population, one of the things that was mentioned in the statutes was this discussion about the 800,000 people and the size of the board. And there were some numbers that were discussed about the population growth. So this is a slide that Mark Van Kirkhoff provided from Development. And this was 1840 to 2010. So it gives you the historical perspective from the time when the county was created in 18, I think, 36 to 2010. And you see that growth curve, and you see our growth curve here. It's slowed down a little bit, but it's very steady. It's very consistent growth. This is from CMAP data, and this was revised, I think, the last time in 2017. They're doing current revisions and updates regularly for different purposes. So I've actually done some looking and found other numbers. They all are relatively close to that 800,000 number in 2050. So that's kind of the timeframe that you have before they project that you start approaching 800,000. So whether you're looking at anticipating it in 2040 or 2050, you're coming to that moment where you're going to be reaching that 800,000 mark, whether you change the state statute, or you work towards reducing the board to 18. But that's kind of the trajectory that they see you on. Again, these are all projections and estimates, but I think right now, if you look at 2020, I think most people would say we're in the 535, 540,000 range of population. So we're not quite at the target population that they have on this CMAP estimate. But we don't have actual numbers from 2020 census, so we might be larger than we expect. So that's also true. This is actually county-by-county comparison, and it shows you where Kane County fits in regard to the other counties. We are the fifth-largest county in the state, just behind Will County. And if you look all the way out to the right in 2050, it looks like we're still going to be in that category of fifth-largest county. But we are catching up and growing probably at a rate as fast as any of the other collar counties, probably a little bit faster than most. So that's kind of the CMAP data. So so far tonight from mapping, we have a 2000 maps, 2010 maps, 2020 maps, 2020 is the estimated from ACS. This is CMAP data just about population. But I think that right now, from a, you know, direction with the task force and the decisions and the types of maps that you need to create, we're in a good position with our GIS team, with the assistance of legal and demographers. We can get a very well-educated understanding of the populations right now with a small margin of error, I would say. But it'll definitely be indicative of what the population is. You know, I don't know that you'll get that exact number until you have census data. And then I think, as Madam Chair, you said, there'll be people questioning the census data. So either way, I think you have that, you know, small margin of error, and every day, people move in and move out. So you're not going to be 100% accurate after the census is published. The next day, people move and come and go. So outside of that, I would say that one of the things that we've asked in the past as the IT department and the GIS department with Tom Nikowski, is that all the requests for maps or custom maps or drawing go through the task force or go through the county board office, Madam Chair, and the committee or commission. We want direction from them. In the past, it does get a little difficult when we start getting requests for custom, different maps that don't reflect maybe the work of the task force. So we'll be trying to respond to them directly, printing maps and working on them. So if you could go through that group and their meeting process, that would be really helpful to us. So we don't have people trying to chase down maps that are not a part of the working committee or working task force. We'd appreciate that. And then again, you know, we're here to help. We'll try to work through that task force process with the different advisors that are available to us. We have a great GIS team. They have so much information and access to mapping. Somebody mentioned earlier, and I'll close with this, the mapping layers of school districts. I think Ms. Bates, you mentioned that. There are probably several hundred layers of districts that we have access to, that we can lay over the top of maps. So if you want school districts, drainage districts, townships, you want almost any district, municipal boundaries, library districts, fire districts, we have those. It's just a matter of how many different ways do you want to slice it and look at it. So all that information is there. We will be adding the 2020 data and additional data to augment what we have. We look forward to working with everyone on this. But again, we're trying to work through the task force, through the county board office, and look forward to producing some more maps for you.
Thank you, Roger. Are there any questions for Roger?
This is Deborah Allen. May I ask something of Roger?
Of course, Ms. Allen.
Thank you. Roger, can you go back to the slide that showed our districts with their population and the-
It'd be the 2020 map, Blair.
I think it was the first one that you showed. And it showed us by name, and it showed our population.
Yep. This one?
The map or the grid?
Yes, I think that's it. Okay. Here's what I wanted to just point out. If you'll take a quick look at this, you'll see that the, that we all are clustered around 21, 22, 23, except for number nine at 30,000, and number 15 at almost 26,000, and number 18 at almost 25, well, 24.5. This is what happened the last go-round. The growth was on the far west side of the county. And so what we needed to do was to spread the districts so that they would not have to service so many people. And that basically meant that everybody kind of, everybody's district was massaged a little bit to the west. For instance, mine went from eight precincts, four on each side of the river, to an additional five precincts on the west side of the river. I moved west. And I'm going to say that that happened, if you start on the far eastern side and you start massaging, then everybody just gets moved a little bit more west, a little bit more west, to pick up those numbers. When we ended up last time, we, the average was 22,167, 22,167. And if we go to 25,000 this time, that would push our population to 600,000. And I don't think we're there yet. So we're talking about moving each district from 22,000 to 25,000, that's 2,500 to 3,000 people. That's really a relatively small massage to get us out there and reduce the size of those three big districts on the far west side. And all of the rest of us just get, probably, all of us get just a little bit larger and probably a little bit wester. So I just wanted to throw that in to follow up on what Mr. Martin said about, are we legal now? Can we expect to be legal in the future? What is the process for remaining legal? And maybe we'll find out that massaging the districts a little west is what we'll end up doing again. I also just wanted to throw something in, following up on Ms. Bates' comment, is that one of the joys of being on the county board has been being a part of the forest preserve. I know that there are people who don't feel like they have the time to participate in the forest preserve, and that's fine. But those of us who have have been able to wear those two hats, I think, successfully. I am not aware of the public or constituents or each other charging us with doing things inappropriately, because we are both county board members and forest preserve district commissioners. So I am trading out the joy of being a part of both organizations as saying it's worth it to have that be part of the job description. Thanks for letting me speak, Madam Chairman.
Ms. Allen, I think that was Barbo Nicky who talked about the splitting up of the forest preserve and the county board.
Yes, it was Ms. Nicky who mentioned that. Thank you.
I have one more. I was going to confirm one of the things that Ms. Allen said. I started at the county in 2002, July. So it's almost going to be 19 years. And in December of that year, after the election, they actually did do the assignment of the odd and even districts for the four-year and two-year terms. They did it in December after the board members were sworn in. So they were sworn into office in the first meeting. They actually decided whether you got the two or four-year. And I remember that my first year here. Yeah.
And just to do a little quick math equation, if the board decides to keep it at 24, we can divide it equally into three different components. So you can also do that. It's going to be half and half, or one-third, 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 which will make it a little bit more interesting. So any more questions for Roger?
Roger, just a comment.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair. I just, looking at Tom Kopey's district out there, we talk about growth trends and stuff. The subdivision wasn't there 10 years ago. I mean, it was farmland, and then just add water, kaboom, Cambridge Lakes. And I want to be really candid. That's the first time I've seen how large that number is, and it's just uncanny.
Projected growth is going to be out that way on the 95 corridor. And then off of 88, with the 47 off-ramp now, that area is looking to expand as well.
I'm not sure what the size is, but Elburn Station in Drew Froze's district is, I think, I want to say it was over 1,000 olms that they're going to put in as the estimate, something like that.
221 of the county precincts do not comply with the current state statute. That's almost 70% of the total.
Microphone.
Hold on, Ms. Nicky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say something about what Cliff said. He is correct. Once, I remember touring that area up in Hampshire before Sun City came in, was actually a county development tour on a bus. And Phil Bus was the executive director of the development department upstairs. And he pretty much said, he said, once you see those water towers go up and the water, the pipes are all laid to bring city or municipal water to these areas, they just explode. And that's what happened with Sun City, and then it just traveled from there. So you are correct.
Note that Gilbert's now has two water towers.
There you go. Camden only has one.
Mr. Martin, is there someone else online who wanted to speak? I thought I heard somebody who wanted to make a comment. No, Mr. Martin?
It seems pivotal that we decide how many people are going to be on the board to move this ahead. When does that conversation begin?
It will be introduced tomorrow to the task force. It's going to be a similar content because we're bringing in new members, the community members as well. So we'll go over some of the information, let them know what their task is. So because they're defined with a certain task that they have to, and rules of operation, rules of order, that is going to have to be complied with. That'll be their very first task to start considering. I know we had suggested that a meeting would happen on April 27, I believe, for the board to make that decision. I believe that meeting will probably be postponed until early May so that the task force can have the opportunity to reflect and have an interesting conversation on what that looks like. I don't think it needs to be over a period of several meetings, unless they so choose. It will be Tuesday if they'd like to come back on Thursday to confer and to make a recommendation, if they're ready to move forward with that. And then the board will meet then the following week to make that decision, to hear their recommendation. So that's the first part. I don't want to do too much data drawing at this point, for obvious reasons. Hopefully, the legislature will make some decisions that will benefit all of us. Not then we could start using the American Survey data, because that is the data that seems both on the federal and state level that is agreed upon informally.
Well, even if they do enact legislation which cures the issue, we still aren't going to have, even if they give us more time, we're still not going to have the data and time to work about it here. I mean, we have to begin, do we not, with the estimates, and then tweak it when we get hard- and then tweak it when we get hard?
That's correct. But remember, the survey, the census data is going to be pushed aside. It's not going to be available to us until September. It's, there are going to be some discussions about its legitimacy. So if Congress is moving forward with the American survey data, if the state of Illinois is moving forward with the American survey data, and the only thing that precludes us from fully feeling confident to move ahead with that is the statute that says it has to be decennial data, which would be the most recent decennial data for us. If we're starting that process, it would be 2010, which is completely inappropriate because we don't have 2020 data yet. So we would, if we followed the letter of the law, I believe we would have to wait until that census data was allowed to us for the 2020. We could download it, but we're not going to wait for that.
I was going to say, I don't think I was clear. We, whatever we end up doing that we put our stamp on and say, this is the deal, we're not going to be able to move this ahead unless we begin dealing with the American survey-
Data, correct.
Stuff. And then we're going to have to tweak it to match reality whenever we are enabled.
That's correct. That's correct. Absolutely. But first, you have to decide how large you'd like to be, the size of the board, because that's paramount.
Fraz has a comment?
Yes, Mr. Fraz.
On that subject, last time we did this, the board or the task force decided to reduce the board by two. And we were just lucky enough to have two board members that were not going to be running again for reelection. And I understand, if I remember correctly, that was our first task that we're going to be talking about tomorrow. So I guess I would suggest or ask that if there are any board members that would like to confide, maybe contact Madam Chairman as Chair of the task force and let it be known what your intentions are because that does make it a little bit easier.
Thank you for that suggestion. Well said. All right. Any other comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Hearing none, meeting is over. Thank you very much.